Okay, the Commission asked that we put this on the agenda today. And I just want to give you a little history about how we got to where we are. And Chris will talk to you about where we are. But about four years ago, there was a push to look at a city-sponsored charter school. And we did look at that. And we got a lot of feedback from our constituents saying, "Stay out of the charter school business, City. We're really not something we think you should be involved in. And let's work with the public schools and see what we can do to make the public schools better." So we went to the school district and talked with the folks, Superintendent, and Keith Oswald as well, about what we could do. And at that point, we formed something called Partnership Schools. And entered into a memorandum of understanding with the school district that we wanted to focus on the lowest-performing school in our city. We had seen all of the FCAT data, FCAT at the time, all the testing data that showed us that Northmore Elementary was the lowest-performing school in our city. And we decided to focus all of our resources on Northmore. Now, a lot of other cities, you know, they raise money, they give $5,000 here, they give $10,000 here. We wanted a focused and controlled effort, particularly on improving literacy in a particular school. As a result, Chris became involved, and then we also hired Eileen Silver as our consultant. And we've been working with Vonda Daniel, who's here as well, the principal of Northmore Elementary, for three years now, Chris? For three years. And they'll tell you about what a great difference it's made. Okay, Chris, go.
Great, thanks, Mayor. Commissioners, Chris Ruge, Director of Economic Development for the city of West Palm Beach, and also the designated staff person helping with this initiative, which, when we said, I said I put education initiatives to match the agenda that you have before you today. But as the mayor outlined, I mean, it is really our efforts at one school primarily, which is Northmore Elementary. So just going to go a quick oversight. I mean, the mayor summarized a lot of what I'm going to talk about in the first couple of slides. When we get into programs and partnerships, I'm actually going to ask Eileen to come up. She's been doing just a tremendous amount of work and is a great asset to our efforts and really knows each partnership and each program that's being implemented by that partner inside and out. She'll segue into the fourth year. And then lastly, we'll have Vonda come up and talk a little bit more about some of the technical reading results and things like that of what we have planned. Just summarize what we've been doing and take any questions that you may have. Throughout the presentation, I put a couple of fun photos in there. This one was taken from Law Day, where we actually had a judge come in.
Judge Parriante.
Yes, or Justice, I'm sorry. Actually, come in and work with the kids on some law curriculum. But I know personally, I've been volunteering for the Let's Read program. And I've seen a lot of these programs firsthand as well, reading to the kids and seeing how the teachers have adopted a lot of these best practices based on the partnerships that have been brought in. And I mean, we are just doing great work up in Northmore. And it's just incredibly rewarding when you see just how far the kids are progressing. Just quick summary, this is where Northmore is located, north end of the city. And I believe I did, just for reference, Reibovich is to the east of the campus. To the south, Pleasant City and Roosevelt Elementary are to the south of Northmore Elementary. So each blue number, if you can see it, is a student area code where those students are designated to go to that school according to how the school district has outlined the boundaries for Northmore Elementary. Student enrollment, as of the last numbers that I could pull, is about 545, Vonda. So that was of February this year. It dropped by three students based on the numbers that were reported in October. And obviously, Principal Daniels is in charge of the school and is doing a great job. Forty-four percent are non-English-speaking students. And we have seen increases in the achievement levels of the students. When we started this program, as the mayor mentioned, it was the lowest performing, but now is no longer the case. So our efforts combined with the partnerships and the efforts of the school district are showing, and the great work that Vonda's been doing, has shown some fruits. Eileen's been helping us on an annual basis and will continue to do so. The MOU that we have in place with the school district is for five years. And we designed that purposefully so that, you know, it would go through the mayor's term, and then there would be one term for the following administration that comes in next spring. So the memorandum of understanding has three main goals. Those goals are very specific to the school improvement plan that is filed with the state. And under those goals, there are some specific targets that we've geared those partnership towards. So each of these implementation categories, there's a partnership that's affecting those. And all of those bubble up at some way, you know, some form or function, apply to the goals for the school improvement plan. And this is what the school district's doing, this is what we're doing, and it's filed with the state. So we're all operating under the same set of goals and plans. So we're all making sure that we're coordinated. This picture is the Carson Reading Room. It was funded by the Carson Foundation that Eileen helped facilitate. And they came into the media center and they put in all these great characteristics and books and things like that. And it's just, it's been a great addition to Northmore Elementary. So all of these partnerships, as you can see, there's quite a few. I mean, we could spend probably a good hour or so talking about all of the programs and partnerships that we have put into the school so far. But what we did is we highlighted about five to give you an idea of the type of programs and partnerships that are together. So I'll have Eileen come up now, and we'll just go over the ones that are highlighted and give you a little bit of a better idea. If you have any other questions about any of these partnerships, we're happy to answer some questions.
I think one of the coolest things about this initiative is that we've been able to engage so many not-for-profit partners in this work that have just been really excited to be a part of it. One of the first things we did was to start a preschool program. So you have two classes now? Two preschool classes? They did not have a preschool program before. Okay, Eileen. Eileen has been working on this project from the beginning. I think it's a labor of love. And she had a huge birthday celebration there.
We will tell you which one. Anyway, as Chris alluded to, I think one of the beauties of this initiative is the fact that we're trying to work on the same page. You know, the school district and the city and the school. So we're trying to work to coordinate with the school improvement plan, as he said. It's very important that we don't go off on our own and set up new goals and new objectives so that we're all... The whole point is that we're integrating some of these results. So as Chris said, we're just going to highlight a few, I think, really exciting things. And by the way, these partnerships, when they began, are still continuing. So it wasn't a one-time shot. We've started and they're continuing. One of the really most influential ones has been with the Pew Charitable Trust, which we have brought in what they call the Balanced Literacy Program, and also funds the summer slide. And that initiative goes from K through second grade. I think the other important element of some of these partnerships, and what is really important, is teacher capacity building. So a lot of these partnerships are really also including professional development for teachers. Because we know that the work that's being done has to be done in the classroom. So the teachers and the work that they do is the critical part of influencing kids and outcomes. So this particular partnership continues. And one of the things that the school has to do is continually do a progress report to Pew to ensure that this initiative continues. And there was one that was just done to show that these kids are improving in terms of literacy. The other was a quick partnership, but one of the things that Comcast did at the beginning is we brought in about 75 computers for families to be able to use in their home, and they had training on them. Because again, in this population of students, many of the kids and the families don't have access to technology. And that's something that I think we have to do better and improve and expand, is the technology in the homes.
So not only did they give the computers, but they also gave a year's worth of access to broadband.
Yes, yes, they did. The other really great partnership is through the Center for Creative Education that we brought in. And that's Arts Integration Program. We began that in the after-school initiative, but decided that through that program that we could do more and that they could do more. So now that program has advanced to working with K through second grade teachers. And basically, it's an integration of academics and arts. And the people that come in through the Center of Creative Education work with the teachers on the curriculum to enhance it using arts. And as most of you should know, that a lot of kids, they do not learn in traditional ways. So we have to think of more creative ways for them to learn. And arts is a wonderful venue for these kids to improve their skills. The other really exciting initiative too is through the Institute for Early Childhood through Palm Beach State College. And this program, that's primarily funded by PNC Bank, is bringing the STEAM program to the early childhood classes that the mayor alluded to. And this is an intensive program, working with these kids and professional development for the teachers to include, you know, the science, the technology, the math, and the arts integrated with these kids. And that program hopefully will advance to, you know, the first grade as well and move to the second grade. One of the things, and I think you said it, Chris, that the city is really focused on is really pre-K through second grade, by the way. That's what we've been trying to focus on. And then the last one that I'm going to highlight is a new partnership through Palm Healthcare Foundation. One of the things that we did this year is we piloted a program on mindfulness. There's a lot of research now about how mindfulness really impacts a lot of things, but in this case, in fact, impacts school improvement. And in our case, literacy. So as a result of that pilot, through Palm Healthcare Foundation and the Breakers, wrote a grant that we're going to implement next year, which will focus on two grade levels and do more of an intensive all-year initiative on mindfulness. And FAU, who is implementing this program through their Brain Research Institute down at FAU... Palm Healthcare, by the way, is doing some tremendous work in brain health. And that's how this all came about. So one of the things that we're going to do is they're going to use this project as a research project. So in the end, we're really going to know these kids that have been involved in this, if indeed they do make improvement in terms of academics.
The other one I would highlight and thank is our library. They train folks to go in to read to the kids. That's what Chris does.
Me too.
And Eileen. And it brings a great resource to the school of trained people to...
Well, the library, right, I didn't mean to omit the library, but the library has done tremendous work with the... I figured you probably knew more about what the library was doing.
Yeah.
The library is doing tremendous research, not only through the Let's Read program, but the library also helped the media center at Northmore really design it and talk about how it should be designed for children's books. And we've also, through Bridges, have brought the adults over to the media, to the library, to really help train them in terms of how to work with their students and what resources that our library has, which are tremendous resources for our community that some people don't know about in terms of introducing them to those resources. So thank you for that. In terms of the fourth year, which we're working on now, some of the things that we're excited about is Northmore is really working. We're sort of changing the flavor of the school. And they're moving towards an inquiry-based method. And the model, one of the models for that at this point is the Conservatory School, which we made a lot of visits to. And now the school district has, I think, bought into this. And they've identified three schools, I think that's correct, three schools in Palm Beach County that they are targeting to move to this method. And it's a teacher capacity building, and it's really changing the way that teachers are working with the students. And it potentially will have phenomenal results at the school. And as part of that, I think there's going to be construction and building. And eventually, hopefully, the school is going to go through pre-K through eighth grade, I believe, eventually. We hope, that's one of the goals. The other initiative that actually started is the Home Language Program, which will eventually turn into a dual-language school. As you see, there's about 44% of the population there that's non-English. I think this has doubled, if I believe, since we started in 2015. And by the way, that in itself is a challenge for the school in terms of literacy and academic progress. I think I mentioned the STEAM implementation that will continue and expand this year. This past year, the teachers went through all the professional development. Next year, it'll actually start in the classrooms. And then the mindfulness initiative, which I mentioned, will start full steam with FAU in the fall. And the other fun thing that we did, we worked on this year, was trying to develop a little bit of an attendance campaign, trying to really bring, you know, parents into the fold and making sure that kids are in school, not only in school, but in school on time. Because a lot of kids are late for school. And one of the things that we did at Northmore is we partnered with the art students in the fifth grade there. And they actually designed the logo and they designed the tagline, which will now be on all of the school-based information that gets sent out. And we'll start more of a campaign in the community next year. And the other initiative that's come up that we're looking into at this point is through Healthy Aquatics, through the Marine Institute, where they have now integrated their curriculum into all of the school district's information. And we're hoping to look at that, to expand that at Northmore in terms of the academics, the arts, and things like that. And that will focus on science and the environment. So we're looking at that for next year. And there will be more, you know, where we meet with Vonda during the summer to look at the school improvement plan and planned our initiatives based on the school.
Just a couple of noteworthy items. On the attendance campaign, that was a big push by the school district, sort of countywide. So that's really, even though we are doing it at Northmore, I mean, that's actually a big thing that I think is a priority for the district overall.
When we first started looking at Northmore, three, four years ago, 25% of the kids had missed more than a month of school.
Right.
And we know that that has a direct reflection on how well they do as well academically. And then the other fun fact, I did put tentative because obviously, some of the details, the Healthy Aquatics Marine Institute is still being ironed out, but they are also one of the applicants for the 12 for 12 project, where we have the pods and small businesses on Clemadre Street. So that's kind of cool that we're blending initiatives here and pretty optimistic about that.
And the other thing I would add is that Reibovich has been very involved with the school and the neighborhood. The north end of the city has really sort of adopted the school. They've been there on, you know, opening day and other times. So a lot of people volunteer.
Yeah, Reibovich has provided many tutors to come to the school. We actually did, last year, we did a wonderful, they sponsored a luncheon for the teachers that we did at Reibovich to give a report to them about what's going on. And we will continue to work. We have some things in the wing that I don't really want to mention at this point because they're not definite with Reibovich that I think potentially will be very exciting.
Any questions for Eileen? Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you very much. And this is really exciting for me, particularly being in my district. And I think this is really great community engagement, if there was room for further community engagement. As far as reading, the Housing Authority has the Senior Center there, which has a whole population of folks I'm sure that would love to engage in the community. And, you know, some corporate partners that may engage in a corporate read program, something like that, because literacy is so important for these kids in their formative years. So thank you for that. And if I can be of any assistance.
Absolutely. You will get a call from me.
Great.
Very quickly.
Vonda, I think you want to come up.
Yeah, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I don't know if I missed it in the beginning. Thank you for the presentation, Eileen, I appreciate it. Did we say how much the investment is over the five years?
Well, we have, we put in the budget about $50,000 for educational initiatives. And so that's our commitment.
Annually, or?
Annually, yes.
And so we don't know, we can't tell you about the not-for-profits.
Sure.
We also got money from HCD for our after-school program, I think, right? Computers, didn't we get money from HCD?
Yes, Armanda just reminded me that HCD put in about $10,000 for the iPads.
Yeah.
Twenty iPads.
And the other not-for-profits, we don't know, like Pinnacle Kids is pretty involved. And of course, the Carson Reading Room, you know...
And that's Eileen's main role, is to help coordinate those. As I know, it takes a lot to coordinate all of those at the table.
Build them, to go out to them, to meet with them.
Eileen, speak into the mic.
Yes, I think that, is this on?
Yeah, you're okay.
The whole idea, I think, of my role is about collaboration. So really identifying those organizations that we feel can add value based on the goals that we want. So it's really that coordination that I've been providing and getting them to participate in this.
That's what I wanted to speak to because that has been an absolutely wonderful support level.
First of all, Vonda, before you start.
Okay.
She's a rock star. She, this is your fourth year, starting your fourth year?
Starting my fifth year, yes.
And Northmore has done an amazing job and been so welcoming and, you know, excited about everything that we're doing and that she's doing. So thank you for being here. I think you were supposed to be on vacation, right?
Yes, I am on vacation.
Thank you for coming.
No problem. I couldn't miss this opportunity just to say thank you, first of all, to everyone, the entire panel. Northmore would not be where we are without the community support. And it has just been absolutely wonderful, as you can see, all of the different opportunities that have been afforded us because of your support and because of the initiative. Eileen has come right beside me and Chris, and we meet. So we've had lots of meetings. And as they discuss, everything aligns to our school improvement plan. Everything is aligned to our data, which outlines our strengths and our weaknesses. Where do we need that support? Because that's what the school improvement plan is built on. And so to be able to sit down with someone and say, "These are the things that we need." I remember doing my first proposal to Eileen, and she looked at it and flipped it over and went, "What?" But believe me, she has met every one of those benchmarks of the things that we need and the support level that we need at Northmore. And as you can see, each of these initiatives, they have started and continued through this period of time. Just going back to the Pew Foundation, started with one initiative, we now have three initiatives with them. And so to connect to the community and have those resources to say, "These are some of the things that we need to add additional support," has been wonderful. So I know that you have questions for me, so I'm here to answer whatever you need.
I was just going to, I was going to make a comment that as a former funder, so I was with the Education Foundation, I know how important it is to have support already at the table to be able to bring more funding to the school. So I appreciate the city's effort in doing that. And it all, I had a, you know, Eileen and I have worked together in the past, but I had never seen it set up like this. And what this almost reminds me of is some of our schools in the more affluent areas have their own foundations. And this almost seems like we're providing that service.
It's similar.
And it is so important because there are so many resources and so many foundations that will give to our schools, but they need coordination. And I know that the schools don't have the extra time to give to this. And so I'm excited to see all of this.
Well, when we first started this, the reading proficiency level at third grade was 22%. So what is it now?
Thirty-nine. We have increased to 39% overall, yes.
So we're getting there.
We're getting there. And it seems like, seems though that's a very low number, but when you're growing proficiency in reading, just think about it, you didn't learn to read overnight. It takes time to learn to read. And so putting those programs into place and laying that foundation, we have seen tremendous growth. We have also been able to target a group of students that started in kindergarten, and we have been able to track them for the last three years. They're sitting at 79% proficiency. So they started with us from day one and have been with us the entire three years. And so we want to get more of those students into the program and getting them through the program. So those are the initiatives that we're working towards. When I do the 39%, that includes all of our students. We have students that took the test that had only been in our school for just a few days, just like any other school, but they may not speak any English at all. We have 44% of our students that are ESOL, and a majority of them came to us not speaking English at all. So they are learning English, and as you learn, they're just growing. And I'm just looking, we're sitting right there, we looked at our levels when we receive our test results back from FSA. And those of you that are not familiar, we are ranked, the levels are level one to level five, level five being the highest, level three being that midpoint that will be considered on grade level or of proficient. We're sitting there with a huge pocket of level twos. When I look at those level twos, those are our ESOL babies that are just learning to read, and they're right there. We had like such a large percentage of them that are sitting within five points of being right there on grade level. So each year, we're just getting stronger and stronger and stronger. Yes, 39% is not where we want to be, but we are growing. We started at 21, and now we're at 39. So we continue to grow.
Chris, you just looked, you just looked a number up, I saw you doing that.
Yes.
Well, because the ESOL, so the students that English is their second language, has doubled in the last four years at Northmore, from 22 to 44%.
44%, yes.
So I mean...
And still growing.
So I mean, that's, I think that considering that, what, you know, the nature of the school makeup, the headway that we're making is pretty good.
Oh, that's interesting, yeah. Yeah, you have twice as many.
But the students are doing well. They're making great progress.
Commissioner Lambert?
Sorry, I have one more question. It sounds like maybe consistency.
Yes.
You were saying is key.
Yes.
You know, you're saying 79% proficiency in reading because those were the kids that stayed in it all three years. Is that what, if you had to pinpoint one main thing that has been most influential or that helps us to really move the needle, is it consistency or is there something else?
I would say, I would say definitely consistency is a large part of that, if anything. I feel that if you're not consistent in constantly changing, things are not going to improve. But consistency is definitely important. To have these programs to educate the students as well as the teachers and provide that consistency, we grow over time. And as I say to my teachers, we, as we stay together, we get stronger. We get stronger because we're growing. And so yes, definitely consistency.
Well, and I think you, you've been hyper-focused on this and have been really leading your team in this direction. I think the teacher capacity building has been a huge part of that.
Yes.
And your continued focus.
Yes.
Makes a big difference.
And if I could just say one thing, I mean, to your question, I mean, obviously, if you have kids that you are keeping in your school consistence, you not only know the kids, but you know where their strengths and weaknesses are. But, you know, traditionally at Northmore, because of the population, you know, kids haven't been that consistent. So that's, you know, they're trying to work towards that to see how do we keep kids in that school. You know, parents move, they leave. There's lots of issues in terms of, in terms of that kind of...
Commissioner James?
Thank you. Talk to us a bit about the pre-K program. How many students have gone through it? And what are some of the metrics you're using to gauge the success of that particular?
Currently, we have 40 students, I should say 40 slots. And pretty much, we're full and have a waiting list each and every year. We have, this is our third year of completion. The very first year, we started with just one class, which was a class of 20. And those are the individuals that we were able to track for the last three years. And I said, like, initially, with those individuals... And I said, like, initially, with those individuals, they started, they did really well. And so our goal has been to keep them at the school. And that's one of the challenges, as Eileen has mentioned, is the transit, they're wanting to transition to other schools, or they move to another area in the district. But those students have done quite well and are more stable than maybe those that came in a little later. Some of the programs that we have started in the pre-K program, as I stated, Pugh has come in and is working through the district with a literacy program that they are implementing with pre-K. We are considered one of the model sites that they're using to teach this throughout the entire district. With the STEM initiative, we're doing STEM and STEAM through pre-K, so that is definitely something that is very important. Our entire school with the primary, we're starting project-based learning, which is inquiry-based learning, which is focusing a lot more on higher-order thinking, hands-on approach, doing more projects. And I'm pretty sure you're familiar with some of the other schools that do some of these programs. But the kids have been just so excited through CCE. CCE has come in and supported that initiative, and we were able to do a whole showcase just recently with our kindergarten, first and second grade students. And I wish I could pull up the video and show you the kids presenting in kindergarten about their community, where they were able to, they made an entire model, and they called it Northmore, of course, but they made an entire model of the community and are able to articulate to you each and every part of the community and the community helpers and why they're important. So they are able to take that and make it real-world and apply it. So those initiatives have been outstanding, and the results that we're getting out of our pre-K program are outstanding.
Well, I think the future plans are exciting, you know, if you're looking at more inquiry-based learning, if you're looking at K, which would be wonderful.
Yes.
You know, and doing some, being able to do some more innovative things would be awesome.
Yes.
Any other questions? Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. One of the things, the byproducts of the success of the school is the stabilization of the neighborhood. So as you talk about these kids that are transition children, because you have a high incidence of rental in the community. And as you stabilize the school, the people tend to stay in the neighborhood, which tends to stabilize the community. And I, so, I know, I'm not sure if you have any numbers on that, but I'm sure it's an amazing impact as well.
Chris?
Commissioner, I don't have any numbers specifically that come to mind, but one thing that we are going to be piloting this year is a teacher housing program, working with Armando and some of the houses that we have up in the north end, where maybe we could put some of the teachers that are teaching at Northmore into those houses to, again, to your point about neighborhood stabilization would just be tremendous.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming, I really appreciate it. Eileen, thanks for the great work you do. Chris, as always, thank you.
Thank you.